We are ready. We don't have a quorum of Planning Commission, so we'll just open the council work session.
Okay.
It's fine. You don't have to have a quorum.
Okay, good.
All right, welcome everybody to the town council and Planning Commission of March 13th, the 18th. Training or workshop session featuring our fabulous attorney Andrea Erard.
Erard.
Erard, thank you. She's gonna give us a little insight on planning, zoning, and comp, uh, comp planning. So we'll turn everything over to her. She told me she's gonna try to keep it under an hour, so we're gonna hold her to that, right?
Yes.
All right, everybody, let's, let's enjoy.
Excuse me, we do have a quorum for planning?
No.
This is on. We do. Lisa's on.
Oh, Lisa's on. Hello, Lisa.
So would the chairman of the Planning Commission like to call it to order?
I call to order our March 18th joint meeting with the town council.
Good job.
Yeah.
So I want to start out by saying thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with all of you. I do want to keep this short.
Are we recording?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I was just seeing, I saw it on the screen, so I was just curious. I know a lot of meetings virtually are recorded, so I was just making sure.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So I, I very much appreciate the opportunity to talk about land use and planning and zoning. I love talking about it. This is not the only opportunity. If you would like to set up another time to talk about this or to take kind of one part of what we talk about tonight, I am more than happy to do that. So with that, I'd like to start out by saying that I think that the Planning Commission are really kind of in many ways the unsung heroes of local government. Because you have a very significant responsibility in terms of dissecting and properly directing the development that occurs in a locality. And that is, that's kind of the thing that almost everything in a locality hinges on. At the same time, you really have no absolute authority to do anything. And so in my observation, a lot of times I think Planning Commissioners go unappreciated and, and undervalued. So I just want you to know that, that I think that what you do is, is very, very important in terms of the land use context. So when we talk about zoning in Virginia, one of the key pieces of that is the comprehensive plan. I call the comprehensive plan sort of the bible. It is the locality's roadmap and vision for development. And the comprehensive plan has to be reviewed every five years, doesn't, does not necessarily have to be changed or updated. So as long as you review it every five years, then we're in conformity with the law. Part of the comprehensive plan is the current official zoning map. And also part of the comprehensive plan is the future land use map. And the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to give the Planning Commission and the town council a guide to use for making decisions regarding land use matters, but also to give property owners notice as well as business owners, you know. I teach at the University of Richmond Law School, and one of the things that I tell all my students is that, you know, when you first buy your house and you take all the money that you have in your whole life and put it into this house, before you sign the contract, go look at the comp plan. Because there's nothing worse than buying a house and finding out that, you know, the landfill is planned for the backside of your property. So it, it should be something that everybody can use to determine how the locality is gonna grow and what can be anticipated in the future. If decisions are made regarding zoning as an attorney, I want them to be tied to the comp plan, either that they do comply with the comp plan or they don't comply with the comp plan. All of that being said, as a legal matter, the comp plan is merely a guide. And the comp plan can be updated really anytime. You don't have to just look at it once every five years. So want to start by talking about that and then say that there are a couple of ways that zoning laws on the local level can be changed. One of them is by a text amendment, which is where somebody, either the town council or the Planning Commission or the town staff or even a citizen makes an application and says, and this is a hypothetical, I'm going to ask that in the, you know, such and so district that the rear setback be reduced from 25 feet to 15 feet, okay? And let's say that that is approved by the town council, that would be done by ordinance, and it becomes law. Then that would mean that going forward, the only required setback would be the 15 feet. Now, let's change that a little bit and say that somebody wants to create a new business district or an, you know, a downtown business district that is, that does not exist. And they did this in Ashland probably seven years ago. If you create a new zoning district and that zoning district is approved until the actual land is rezoned to that district, it's just a district, it's just an option that's out there. So so you can have a text amendment that modifies an existing zoning provision. You can have a new zoning district that gets created. But the only way that zoning or a new zoning district is applied to a piece of land is through a rezoning on that piece of property. Now, for all three of these actions, there should be an ordinance, and so it, it can kind of be confusing for people. And of course, the town council cannot act on anything until the Planning Commission has conducted a public hearing and made a recommendation. Any questions about any of that? So I'm on Facebook and I see.
Andre, I'm sorry, I had to get off mute. I had a question on that.
Yes, thank you.
You said that we would have to have supporting documents for any of those methods, so text amendment. And I guess processes and procedures placed in there for each step that literature could be changed. So where does that, I guess, fall into? Is that in the town code or is that part of the comprehensive plan?
Are you talking about changing the comp plan?
I, I thought that you said like if, you know, something goes to get changed, like they could do it by text amendment or they could do it by rezoning.
Yes.
And that we had to have those procedures drawn out before time, I guess you said, for all three methods. So is that in the comp plan or is that in the town code itself?
It is in the state law. Thank you for asking that. That's a, that's a great question. So the state law says that if you're gonna do a text amendment or any kind of a rezoning, that it has to be referred from the town council to the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission is required to conduct a public hearing. And then with a certain amount of, within a certain amount of time, it's like 100 days, the Planning Commission is required to make a recommendation to the town council. If no recommendation is made after that time expires, and it's, I think it's 100 days, then it automatically goes on to town council with no recommendation. And here's the part about why I said that I think you're sort of the unsung heroes, because I see Planning Commissions spend a lot of time reading and understanding and researching things. And then they make very difficult decisions about whether or not to recommend something to the town council. And the town council is not bound by the Planning Commission's recommendation at all. It is nothing more than a recommendation. It's your opinion. I generally recommend that the work of the Planning Commission be considered because you're supposed to be the, the land use experts. But the town council doesn't have to do that, and it's, it's not unusual in some places for the town council and the Planning Commission to be completely at odds with one another. So there's an application that's made for a text amendment, okay? Then the town council refers it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission advertises and conducts a public hearing. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation, yes or no, or yes or no with conditions, you know, we have these suggestions. Then it goes to the town council and it's advertised and there's a public hearing. And then the town council votes on the actual text amendment or rezoning that's before it.
And, and one of the good examples of that is the people that own Caroline Garage filed a text amendment to have the usage that was allowed in that, I guess, B2 or whatever, to be changed to allow the light industry of the air conditioning people. So a text amendment was done, we voted on it, then it went down to planning, planning recommended it back up to us, and then we voted on it. And, you know, that's how it went. That, that was a recent one that we had just done.
Yeah, and that, that's a really good example, Mayor. Thank you for, for sharing that. I also want to explain that a special exception or a conditional use permit, those are zoning actions also, and they follow the same process as a rezoning or a text amendment. Same thing, like if somebody has an existing conditional use permit or special exception, they can request that it be modified. And it goes through that same process. There's an application. It gets referred to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission has a public hearing. Then the town council has a public hearing and then it's voted on.
But now you said for modifications. Now.
Or cancellation.
Right. Now that means also when they come back in for modifications or changes, that now council has the right to implement other changes and modification besides what they're asking for, correct?
That is true. That is true. However, when you're looking at a conditional use permit or a special exception, the conditions that are imposed must be related to the use of the property. So for example, if you have a car wash and you want to put restrictions on the number of cars that can be lined up at any one time or the hours of operation or the noise, anything like that, that would be, those are all conditions related to the use. Where you get on shakier ground is when you start talking about aesthetic things, you know. Well, we really want the architecture of the car wash to be, you know, modern and, and we want the colors to be this, that, and the other. Well, I mean, unless the colors or the architecture in some way pose a, a safety risk or a hazard, unless you've got something that relates to the use, those types of conditions really should not be imposed. Any questions about any of that? Okay, I'm gonna go on. So in terms of our current zoning map, our current zoning map is what it is. It shows the parcels of land that we have in town and it shows how they're zoned, period. The future land use map, in approving that, it has no effect on the property whatsoever. Like, let's say the mayor's home, okay? Let's say that the future land use map shows that to be, I don't know, heavy industrial, okay? And let's just say for whatever reason, that gets approved as part of the future land use map. That does not change his existing zoning. What it means is that it's intended as a guide that in the future that the town is looking to locate heavy industrial uses in that area. So if Mark sold his property and the new property owner came in and said, hey, you know, I want a heavy industrial use and I want to rezone, then that rezoning request would be supported by the future land use map and hopefully some verbiage in the comp plan. Does that, um, does that make sense? Yeah, okay. So let me say one other thing. Let's just say that, that the mayor, I'm gonna pick on him. Let's say that the mayor wants to rezone his property to heavy industrial. He's got some business idea and he's gonna get rich and retire and not have to be mayor anymore. And the comp plan designates it as low-density residential, okay? And let's just say that whatever this great idea is that, that the mayor has is also gonna be a moneymaker for the town. We get tax revenue off of it. And so the town says we really want him to be able to do what he wants to do because there's something in it for us too, but oh gosh, the comp plan says low-density residential. Well, then what you do is you can do a comp plan amendment just for that one area, not that one lot, for that one area of town. And the mayor can apply for rezoning. And they can go alongside one another as parallel actions. The comp plan really should be acted on first. But they would travel together. So you don't have to like go all the way through and change the comp plan and then start over again and do the rezoning. And that is what a lot of localities do when, you know, maybe originally they thought that an area of the locality would be good for one use, but then lo and behold, you know, Amazon comes knocking and they think, well, that would, that, that would not be bad. And so, you know, in order to overcome the, the guidance that's in the comp plan, a comp plan amendment is, is what would be done. And a comp plan amendment has the same process as a zoning text amendment. It starts with a public hearing with the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission would make a recommendation and then that travels to the town council. Town council has a public hearing and then the town council votes on it one way or the other.
Meaning they would vote on the comp plan change and the zoning request, correct?
Yes, they would vote on the comp plan change first and then they would vote on the zoning request.
Okay, very good.
You can do a similar process like that, like if somebody wants to rezone and they want a conditional use permit, they can do both of those at the same time. And again, they would travel together, but the zone, the rezoning would be voted on first and then the conditional use permit or the special exception would be voted on second.
Now, this would, this would, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
This would all be for to simplify the process, save time and money as well, right?
Correct, yeah.
Whereas instead of, instead of government takes forever to get something done, there's something that, since they travel together, you can, it's really a big time saver.
Correct. And the other thing you can do is you can have a joint public hearing and a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the town council. And then that, that additionally saves on, you know, time and money. So that is an option also. But I've read a lot of comments on Facebook when the Planning Commission has been looking at the future land use map, that there seems to be tremendous concern that that the actual underlying zoning is being modified. And, and it, it does not do that.
Well, that's, that's where coming in and educating the public and also ourselves, that, because, you know, people don't know, because really, they have, I don't know, I guess, maybe the transparency at one time wasn't portrayed as much because we've got so much social media now, you know, so the transparency is there, you know. You know a lot, you see a lot, you hear a lot. Where before that they didn't? So people were kind of uneducated on a lot of this and now it's being bought to them, bought to light, and they're like, whoa, wait a minute, you know. So they, they really didn't understand.
Yeah.
Uh, now that we have social media and everything is out there, you know, people are like, whoa, you know, now they're getting an education on it and I think it helps. And getting the word out about it is, 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 is a big thing. It really, the community gets to understand it better.
Yeah.
Because you're right. They, they were thinking, oh no, they're gonna change the comp plan, which means my zoning is gonna be changed, you know.
No, but I mean, again, the community should not ignore the comp plan because the comp plan is gonna be the guide on which future decisions are likely to be made.
Right, which means if contractors comes in, then we're already set to look at that.
Right.
Yeah, you're right. They, they need to be educated on everything all the way around. And I'm sorry for taking the show. Go ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet.
That's okay. I think, Arthur, did you want to say something?
No, I'm good. I'm, I'm just sitting back and listening.
Oh, cuz your, your little box kept lighting up. Um, are there any questions that you have for me based on things that have come before you recently, either Planning Commission or Council?
I mean, I, I, go ahead.
No, Arthur, go ahead. I'm, 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 I'll go next.
I, I mean, it was more of just a comment. I wouldn't necessarily say that from the recent interactions that I've seen specific to the comprehensive plan that the public wasn't educated on zoning versus comprehensive plan. Um, I would say that that was apparent and that there was such a concern that consistency was made by the public to bring those concerns up to both the Planning Commission and town council. So I, I mean, I've been on the Planning Commission and town council and seen both, so I, I'm just kinda.
Help me understand then, because what I have read is that people think that there is a large development that's gonna occur.
Well, there, that was brought forth to the Planning Commission, so. And I mean, you're in the town council meeting, so I mean, you've heard the public come and when they've talked about that too. That was in the December meeting.
But there's no rezoning for a large development.
Correct. This was brought forth, I mean, back eight months ago to the Planning Commission when it was brought up about high-density zoning on certain parcels. And the public was against that and they voiced their concerns about that, about where they live and property values. There was numerous concerns. And then we just keep circling back. First it was high-density, then it was PUD. And now it's like another last-ditch effort to try to change this after the Planning Commission has gone ahead and made a recommendation.
Now, are you talking about a proposed text amendment or are you talking about the comp plan?
I would say that there would be both in there. I mean, they've both been brought up.
There's been no text amendment made. It's just the comp plan.
There was one for PUD.
Yeah, but a, a text amendment would be put in by the, the individual applying in which you would then have a piece of paper in front of you explaining what they're looking for. There would be a fee that was charged, paid by them, as right now it's just a comp deal. As far as I can see, there is no text amendment made, no site plan or anything else. So, you know, that's, and, and the company, I mean, the community is concerned about it and I'll see why, but if they look at the zoning on it, the zoning already allowed 25 homes on the property, so, you know. So, I mean, but yeah, you're, you're right. It's, it's an understanding of the community as what's going on.
Which is how it affects. Yeah. But so if the Planning Commission were to recommend, say, a, a comp plan amendment or a text amendment, each of those would have to go through that process where they were advertised once a week for two weeks. There would be a public hearing before the Planning Commission. And then once the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, then it would go on to the town council and then the same process kind of starts all over again. I just, the place where I come from, I, I think community involvement is really important. And especially in a small town, there, there's really nothing more important than understanding the development that can occur because unlike in a county, you're gonna be a lot closer to whatever it is that's going on. I just, what I don't like to see is when people are unnecessarily alarmed that something drastic may happen in their community when that is not actually what is on the table. And that was, that's just my impression based on anecdotal comments of things I saw on Facebook, so.
Hey, hey, Andrea. Can we, can we kind of get back on track of the training session then, I guess, and kind of get off of a one certain partial and subject?
Sure, yeah.
I think, I think because we're trying to incorporate two different things here into a regular type meeting and into a training session.
Okay, all right.
Can we do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the authority to do zoning on. So, the authority to do zoning, um, on behalf of the town of Bowling Green um, comes from the police power. And you all probably know that Virginia is what we call a Dillon Rule state. Um, Judge Dillon was a a cranky old judge from, I think Oklahoma, who thought that the lowest form of government was local government and that they should not be allowed to do anything on their own unless the state legislature had specifically told them that they could do so. So in most instances, we have to be able to point to a statute from the general assembly that says, yes, you can pass an ordinance allowing golf carts in the town. Zoning authority is, is different. There are statutes that authorize zoning, but it originally arose out of the police power. And the police power is the ability to make decisions for the health, safety and welfare of the community. And it is one of the, um, strongest areas of authority for taking action to, to protect a community. Have any of you ever participated personally in any type of an action before the planning commission? As a citizen? Yes? And so Tammy, how would you describe that experience?
Um, well, I was new at it, I mean, I just went in and laid out what I wanted and they, they made recommendations, just like you said, and, and the process started rolling.
Did you feel like you understood it as you were going through it?
No.
I think that's very common, yeah.
No, it was just like, you need to fill out this, you need to pay this, and then you need to go to this meeting.
Now, before you bought your property, did you look at the comp plan?
Uh, that would have been Mark, I don't, I don't know if he did or not.
Okay.
No, the only, the only thing I knew was that it had, uh, potential for a bed and breakfast, uh,
Oh, yeah.
And that was, that was it. So that was one of the reasons why we had looked at it also.
So, another area of zoning that I want to just touch on is that when somebody requests a rezoning, um, they can offer proffers. And that is something that is voluntarily offered where, let's say I want I want, let's say I want an industrial zoning category. And the town kind of says, oh wow, that's like, if we rezone your property to that, there's a wide range of uses that, that could be on your property in the future. And I say, yeah, but I just want to do this with my property, I'm not interested in all those other uses. Well, the reality is that once I get rezoned to that zoning district, any use that's listed in that district, I can use by right. And it's not just me, it travels with the land. So if I sell my land to Arthur and Arthur buys it, I mean, I may have been a very good landowner and may have kept my gentleman's agreement and said, I'm only going to do this one use. Arthur says, well, the heck with that, I can make a lot more money, I'm going to do this other use. So, I think it's important to keep in mind when property owners come before you that the person you're looking at may not really be the person down the road who owns it. For a variety of reasons, you know, they may change their mind, they may pass away, they, you know, who knows? So, when you, when you look at an application for something, don't picture in your mind that person that's sitting in front of you, picture in your mind whatever range of options and whatever might happen with that property down the road. And so I could say, well, okay, I only want to do this one use and I'm happy to proffer out all these other uses. And then I sign a document that says, I proffer out that none of these other by right uses apply to my property. And then in that way, I am voluntarily on the legal side, doing what I am orally promising to do. Does that make sense? Have I lost you?
Yeah, that's, that, that's kind of almost like a special use permit then. Something similar?
No, not really, it's a
Really?
It's a
I mean, I mean, you're rezoning it, but you're basically tying that land up to one, a certain, one certain usage zone.
Right.
Right.
And I'm proffering out, I'm saying, you know, I know this is a very intense zoning district category, but I'm agreeing that I, I'm not going to do all those other things.
Yeah, but does that mean that when you sell the property, that that goes with it?
Yep.
Okay. Now, not to say that it, not to say that it can't change. They, they can come back in and, uh,
Request a profferment.
Request a proffer.
Which goes through that same process, public hearing to the planning commission, public hearing to the town council. Um, any questions about any of that?
Well, I guess, um, on the legal side where, like, what comes to mind is a proffer situation that happened in Caroline where a developer, I guess it was in the paperwork that they were supposed to supply a fire station to the Belmont area. Being in fire and rescue, I've known that that fire station hasn't ever come about from the developers and now the county has, um, you know, happened to financially put that up because the proffer didn't come through on that end of the deal. So, I, I guess when, even though, and I understand, you know, somebody could say that, but obviously, I guess litigation would probably take place if, um, the proffer didn't come through on their end of the deal, is that correct, or?
Yeah, you would have a suit to enforce the proffer. Um, because a proffer carries the force of law, but if the developer doesn't have the money, sometimes a suit like that is pointless.
I understand. I, I guess what I'm, I'm looking at it, you know, for, um, a cost that, you know, those individuals maybe 10, 15 years ago were saying, hey, you know, when this developer comes in, they can foot the bill for a needed, you know, fire station because more developments coming in, there's going to be more residents, so we need more fire protection. And then that doesn't come through, well, that puts a pretty big deficit back on that local locality when that doesn't come through, you know, now they have to come up with the funding for that.
That's correct, and, and I don't know the particulars of that proffer, but another, one thing that I have seen frequently is where a locality has accepted proffers and because of the nature of the proffer, it's not enforceable. So a lot of times I see localities that will have old proffers for all kinds of stuff, and a lot of times it'll have all sorts of things in there because maybe it was politically, uh, it generated a lot of interest and in order to address the concerns raised by the public, the developer puts all these things in the proffers. Well, not all of them are enforceable. Um, they're supposed to be related, you know, to the use of the property, the proffer is. And so, you know, depending on how that particular proffer was worded, um, it, it may not be enforceable and it's not popular to come back later and go, well, yeah, we sort of probably shouldn't have done that. Um, but, but it is very common in what I have seen in the, um, fire protection area, that developers come in and, oh, well, we'll get you this, you know, 100-foot truck and we'll get you this and we'll get you that, and then they build and they sell and they never follow through. And a lot of them are not actually enforceable. So you, so like if the planning commission were to receive proffers for something, I, I hope that um, somebody would share them with me because I can review them and give, you know, feedback on that to say, well, this is really nice and it sounds good, but just be aware that if the developer doesn't voluntarily do it, it's probably not enforceable.
Question, Andrea. If, can you write proffers, proffers to say like, um, like that Belmont subdivision? Can you, can you be so detailed as to say, after the sale of so many lots, then the, then the fire station has to be built or cease development?
Yes, you can
Or continues?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's, you have to kind of, you have to put your teeth in it upfront.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, now, we can also do, uh, reverse proffers where the town would offer proffers to a developer to come in, correct?
No.
Okay, so we can't say, well, we'll keep your property taxes at the existing property tax level for four or five years if you come in here, we can't do nothing like that.
No, but that's what the EDA is for. EDA can say, you know, hey, we don't have any control over what that town council does, but if your property taxes go up, we will pay you the difference in what you pay so that you essentially have the same property taxes for the next 10 years. That's what the EDA is for.
And the, and the, and the local government funds the EDA?
Correct, or the EDA has, usually has some of its own money as well from stuff.
Okay.
But yeah, the local government does fund the EDA. So we are just about at 45 minutes. Anybody have any burning land use questions? Really sad.
Well.
Am I awake at night and think about these things? I do. Seriously.
I'm sure when it comes before us and we have something, you know, that comes up, we'll have questions, you know?
So, I, I don't have any gauge for your, um, experience and knowledge in this area. And just so that I kind of know going forward, have I told you stuff that you didn't know or stuff that you already knew? Or stuff that maybe you'd heard about and, um, knew something about it? Like, can you give me a little bit of a gauge?
You told me stuff about, that I was aware of, but you broadened it and made it more understandable to me, the process and
Okay.
Yeah, I certainly think it was helpful.
What was that, Jeff?
I certainly think it was helpful. Uh, a few of us on here did, uh, attend the, uh, the planning commissioner class, um, held in various places around the state, uh, was, it was myself, Valerie, Arthur, you went right, and I know Lisa did. Yeah, that's really informative. Um, and I would certainly still encourage, uh, Sandy to go when, when the opportunity presents itself. But any kind of refresher, like what we're doing now is always good.
Okay. Well, I'm glad that, you know, you went to that. I, I have done that training myself as well and, and I feel like they throw a lot at you at that time. So, you know, if you guys have something that comes before you where, you know, where you want to kind of drill down on it, I, I'm happy to be available as a resource.
Well, I did have one question for you, or at least a thing to ask you to go over again. Um, back, uh, when you were talking about, um, when Mark had mentioned about when you get, uh, conditions, uh, goes through the planning commission, gets through the council and the council decides to maybe go a different direction with, or whatnot. Um, maybe if you could explain to everybody, uh, kind of the purpose of substantive change, when that should go back to the planning commission for a second round?
Never. That's what I mean, it kind of stinks. I, you know, the comp plan, if there's a substantive change, there are instances where that might go back to the planning commission. But let's say you have a, a conditional use permit and it goes to the planning commission and you guys put a lot of hard work into coming up with 10 conditions. And then it goes to the town council and the council's like, we don't like any of these conditions, we want our own conditions and we're going to put 20 conditions in. That's it. Council has the last word, hence my initial comment of kind of a thankless job sometimes, you know, unsung heroes because you do all the work or you do a lot of work and, and it may or may not be utilized.
True, um, I, I didn't mean it so much like that, uh, as in like council's opinion, I, I meant more of, uh, um, for example, there is a really, really, uh, large development, uh, possibly occurring in King George about nine months ago. Now, over the course of, uh, what had happened, um, planning commission sent an initial, um, recommendation, but more information came out, uh, some of it was, uh, it was lawyer-related at the time, uh, there was a misunderstanding of, uh, some of the documentation. And so it was sent back because it was basically believed, um, that they would have maybe come to a different decision if they had that further clarification at the time. And then later after that, uh, I believe it went back a second time, uh, when there was a change in the proffers. But this was a very large scale deal, um, but I, I more so meant when the supplementing information changes, not just, uh, if council is just like, hey, we'd like to change X to Y, planning commission, look at it again, yeah, I, I wouldn't agree that you send it back for that.
So I, I think that that is a rare circumstance. Uh, the state law says that the council cannot vote on anything zoning related until the planning commission has made a recommendation on it. So in order to have to send it back, to have to send it back, mind you, uh, the, the, the change would really have to be so substantive that there would be an argument that that criteria of not having had a recommendation on that question from the planning commission could be met. So that's the legal side. As a practical matter, a lot of times a locality, um, has a great relationship with the planning commission, they really value the input of the planning commission. And they may choose to send it back to the planning commission for additional insight and input. My caution about that is that, and, and I've seen developers that are like, oh my goodness, I'm living in developer purgatory, get me out of this. That's why there's that timeline, that's why someone applies, the application is forwarded to council, council refers it to the planning commission and that starts the clock ticking. That's why there's that 100-day limitation so that a developer is just not stuck for 18 months in front of the planning commission, trying to make them happy. Um, and I think that I think that depending on the length of time that this extended, you know, a developer might have a, a legal challenge if something gets hung up too many times for too long with the planning commission.
Uh, question for you. Going, going back to what you're saying. So in other words, we should really have the planning commission that that we have or anybody has should really be up on the zoning laws or the way the way the locality zonings are written. So when they're at their meetings and they're doing their litigations, that they are aware of what can already be done, how it can be done, everything right up front. And that's how they should base their decision.
Mm hmm.
Correct?
Yes. Yeah. And I'm happy to help with that if if that's needed.
I had a question for you, Andrea.
Uh huh.
Um, like the example that you had used with Amazon. So obviously, Amazon comes in, you know, they're going to bring money into any community. And if somebody was going through a comprehensive plan update and Amazon wanted to come into a suburban area and the residents didn't want Amazon to come in. And after they got feedback, I mean, wouldn't that, you're saying that the comprehensive plan should never go back to the planning commission, but after receiving feedback from the public, I mean, wouldn't you say that it would almost need to go back? Or I I mean, I'm just like, if there's such a concern for something, I I mean, I I feel like sometimes it would have to go back and you said that it should never go back.
Well, a comprehensive plan can sometimes be referred back to the planning commission. But let's take your example because I I like that one. Let's say that Amazon comes in, they do a comp plan amendment and they do a rezoning request, okay? At the planning commission level, you guys get a lot of feedback and nobody wants it, okay? So it travels to the town council with a recommendation of no, 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 on both of them. And the town council says, show me the money. And the town council, over the objections of the citizens, approves the comp plan request and approves approves the rezoning request. That's perfectly legal. Now, let me let me give you a different, a slight, a variation on that on that scenario. Let's say that Amazon comes in and they're trying to save money, so they don't hire a lawyer and they just apply for a rezoning request, okay? Planning commission says no, because the community is all up in arms. It goes to the town council. And the town council says, yes, 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 we're going to grant this rezoning. And then there are property owners that are affected by this rezoning. And they hire a lawyer and the lawyer says, well, shoot, they they approved this rezoning. And it is not supported by the comp plan. That gives you an opening to challenge this in court. And they could then, you know, challenge it in court. And depending on the judge, you, the outcome could be that the locality loses depending on the amount of weight that the comp plan is going to be given by that court. But the worst part is is that you really don't want litigation, A, because of the cost, but B, because you know, Amazon wants to come in, they want to move dirt and they want to start, you know, delivering packages. They don't want to be tied up in litigation. So that's the rationale behind making sure that you like what's in your comp plan and your future land use map, which is all one thing. And that you you that you actually use it as a living, breathing guide. And if the comp plan has something in it that is really not appealing, it it should be changed. Anybody else? Nope. All right. Well, thank you. I really appreciate your time. I look forward to seeing some or all of you again. Some of you I really want to see in the flesh. It's been a long time over video. And, you know, feel free to to reach out if you have any questions about anything, okay?
Thank you.
Excellent.
Well, Andrea.
Yes.
We sure thank you a lot. I know you put a lot of effort into into what you do for us and we really appreciate it. And and if you come up with anything else you think we need to know, I think we're all more than happy to get together and listen and learn. Because I know a lot of us have a lot to learn. A lot of us know some stuff, but we don't know the full extent of it. And I think I think tonight you enlightened me on the full extent of of a lot of things or different ways to approach it. You know, I wasn't aware that we can run comp plan change and zoning change at the same time, you know, as as a time saver. So I think everybody learned something.
Well, I appreciate that. And I mean, I I just want to keep the lines of communication open. So, you know, I kind of view it as a, you know, a roundtable discussion that that I hope will continue.
Well, good. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything they want to add or ask or say? Now, now's your time to do it. I'll give you ten seconds.
Well, I'll just chime in for just a second. Going back to the comment about the social media, I think we all, those of you who use social media, because I try to stay off of it as much as possible, regardless what platform, we have to remember that you know, we don't need to the idea is not to educate or try to inform the public via social media. I think the answer to a lot of the questions that the public has is how about coming to a town council meeting or how about coming to a planning commission meeting? I think by using the different social media platforms as well as just talking to people in the community, everybody hears something different. And I think that's why we end up with the some of the horrible meetings that we've had recently. So I just I just plead with all of you to be prudent in your communication via social media and and in person so that the public hears all the correct, correct information, you know, so we don't have all this unrest and all this craziness. That's just my two cents. I try to stay off of it as much as I can because people misinterpret.
Well, and one of the great things that's come out of the pandemic is that so many meetings are available virtually as as well. So people can, they don't even have to come, they can just tune in. Yeah.
Exactly.
And and you're right, Lisa. I didn't mean educating people with social media, but getting them educated because they hear all this stuff on social media and they don't know what is true and what's not true. And you're right, it's you know, so we as council members and planning commission members, we either need to just stay off of it, or if you do put anything out there, put out what is correct, you know, and what, you know, would direct people in a in a direction to where they can find the proper information. And you're correct. And if we get more people to come to the meetings, which I am really impressed that we've had quite a few people coming and people signing on. I think it's, you know, in the past, meetings were like desert, you know, nobody's there, you know? And when you can get the involvement of people, then that's when the education can start with people because then they'll spread around, you know, to their friends and others. So yes, you're right. Thank you for that. Anybody else have anything?
I just want to say one thing, Mayor. You know, another thing that we can do, just like, you know, the question about what's the process for rezoning or what's the process for text amendment? I think we can create like a place on our website where we could have like basic FAQs. You know, so that i- if citizens are concerned or confused, they they have like, they can go to the source and and really get the right information.
Yeah, you see that on a lot of sites, you know, frequently asked questions, you know?
That's a great idea.
And yeah, that's that that is a good idea. It's very good. Here and nobody else. Do I have any motion to adjourn this training session for March eighteenth tonight with Andrea?
I make a motion, Mayor, to adjourn this training session on March eighteenth.
I can second it.
We've got a and a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed or nay? Aye, Lisa?
And can I get a motion to adjourn the planning commission joint session for March eighteenth?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, folks.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody for joining in.
Have a great night.
You too.
We'll see y'all later.
Careful going home, everyone.